All right, I'm going to call the order. The July 20th special meeting in Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. With the exception of the public hearing that we have coming up. There are two places for comments today. One specifically regarding the public hearing for Agenda Item 3. And any comments that are unrelated to that proposed budget hearing will be heard in Agenda Item 17. So if you have any public comments that you would like to make, please fill out the appropriate card and they will be brought to you at the appropriate time. Now, would you please stand and join us as Kristin Covell leads us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sounds good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first thing on our agenda today is the public hearing, the overview of the proposed 2024-2025 budget. We have Assistant Superintendent Julie Davis giving us the presentation.
All right, well, good morning. I'm actually going to see how this is bringing up quick because the first thing I want to do is kind of step back for a minute and show you our full budget cycle and try to help gain you a little bit of understanding. I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this. You each have this color copy of this, whatever size this is, A half by 14. And then we will also post this on our website. But the goal of this document is really to try to overlay the district's budget cycle against the state's budget cycle. If you remember, our budget starts July 1 and runs through June 30, and the state's starts October 1 and runs through September 30. So there's a little bit of difference, but again, I'm not going to read this for you, but we started it off in January and that's when the state really starts their budget cycle for the next fiscal year already, even though theirs doesn't begin until October. And that starts with that revenue consensus estimating conference, and they do that twice a year. You'll see that in January and May. At the same time, for example, we are analyzing our current year revenues and expenses for our budget memo that we are getting ready to pull this together for you as a board to consider. So again, this just really outlines our process along with the state process and how it's very, it's a 12-month process for both groups. And it can get pretty intense and you can see sometimes we're just in a land that we're waiting. And that's really what's going on right now with next year's budget for us. So we'll walk through our estimates here and what we're presenting for you to consider for next year's budget. But it's built on estimates. The state right now is in what's called a conference committee. So there are members from both the House, the Senate, and also from the governor's office that come together and really just hash the budget out behind closed doors. Nobody's a part of that except for those members that have been selected. And then when they come out with a budget, it's voted up or down in the House and the Senate, and then it goes to the governor's office for signature. And the governor actually has line item veto capabilities, so sometimes it's not even the whole thing. But right now, that conference committee is going on, and so we'll talk in a minute here about our estimates that we use to develop our budget for next year because by law, as a school district, we have to adopt our budget by June 30, even if the state hasn't given us any final information. Just another resource to help the understanding of school budgets and our cycles compared with the state's and how they differ. Okay? All right. Let's look back to our other screen real quick. All right, so let's talk about our budget for next year. I'd like to start with some of our legal requirements. So we're required to hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing right now. But there are also some other things that we have to follow, and you can see those on the screen. You can't adopt a budget that causes estimated expenditures to exceed total estimated revenues. And in this case, estimated revenues includes our fund balance. So it's not just the new revenues that we're anticipating that will come in, it includes our fund balance. So that's why it sometimes can be confusing because you might say, well, wait a minute, we're adopting the budget and we may be using fund balance. Well, that's okay because we have a fund balance to help offset that. So that's what that means. And then, of course, your chief administrative officer, which is our superintendent, has to transmit the recommended budget, and that's what we're doing here today. Okay, so I talked to you a second ago about our assumptions and how the state hasn't finished the budget next year, so we really don't know what is going to happen and where we'll turn it out. But we do know what the governor's proposed, we do know what the House and the Senate have each proposed. So we, in this budget recommendation, are going with the governor's proposal of $241 per people increase to the foundation allowance. For us, that's about $2.1 million. We're also recommending, sorry, we're also projecting, rather, a decrease of about 145 students for next year. So that means a loss of revenue of about $1.4 million. So you can see right out of the gate, $2.1 million increase, but we're going to pull down 1.4 for a loss of enrollment across our system, so really only not gain at that point of $700,000. We're building in a slight reduction to Section 147A mixers. That's our retirement program that we participate in. That's just one of those categoricals where some additional revenue that comes in to help support the cost of retirement. We're pulling that down a little bit this year for next year, and then, you know, as we go through the year and that increases, then of course we'll bring that to you. The next two items are decrease to the ESSR. So the ESSR 2 is done. That was done this past September. So we had a little bit of budget in the current fiscal year, so we'll pull that down for next year. And then ESSR 3 will be ending at September 30 of 2024, so we're pulling that down. There'll be, there's a little bit left in this budget to cover some summer school programs, but by and large, that will be out of the budget, and that's about $5.4 million. A little bit of changes in some of the other grants, a reduction of $28,000. Interesting, we're pulling that back down. Who knows what will happen in that industry, but we tend to be a little bit more conservative and don't want to plan, but the industries are going to remain where they're at, so we're pulling that a little bit down for this initial budget. We're also reducing a payment that was what we call a below-the-line adjustment. It was really support for last year's expenditures related to special education, so that $328,000, we are not budgeting for that next year because it was received just for this year. Our special ed itinerants, so if you think of a special ed itinerant, those are our folks who are supporting our students with IEPs and those staff would be social workers and psychologists, speech pathologists. Those are just some examples. Those, for a number of years, have been what we call the dual-employed positions, and they were payrolled through the ISD, but they were underneath our employee contract. So we are making a switch. This year is not just us, it's all of the districts within the county and the school district. Those are coming back in-house. There was a little bit of extra revenue that we're supporting through that about how special ed is funded at the state level, so that's a decrease of about $200,000 in revenue. And then just a miscellaneous reductions of revenue of about $56,000. All right, moving on to the expenditure side.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can we just go back? So the decrease in special ed, can you elaborate a little bit more where that $200,000, like, or do I have to ask for a, like, an itemized, like, I was just trying, curious?
The revenue?
That one and also for the IED.
So this is the revenue side. So it's additional revenue that was in place because those itinerants were payroll through the ISD, then they're allowed to charge, there was an indirect charge, so they knew there were costs for our end. They were getting additional money from the state to support that based on that arrangement. And now that they're coming back in-house, that money is no longer available.
Okay, so I just agree with you for just a second. So we have, so does that look like we're not, I mean, we're not having money come in so that we're going to, we're going to ask for it elsewhere? Is that, I mean, we're just showing the decrease of what's not coming in, correct?
Correct.
So is that eliminating jobs in that category?
No, no, there are no changes to those positions.
Please.
All right, so let's move on to the expense then. We have a decrease in a number of teaching positions, and we're doing it all through attrition, so there are not any layoffs with this. We're looking at 6.4 elementary teachers, 3.8 middle school teachers, and 5.4 high school teachers, and that will result in a decrease of about $2.4 million of expense. This next bullet is related to the ESSR. So if you recall, we used our ESSR 3 funding to support a little bit of our elementary teachers, right? About, you know, it just varied what percentage of an elementary teacher. With that ESSR funding going away, we now need to bring that cost fully back in, so it's an additional cost of $2.5 million that's returning back to the general fund. And that's, we've talked about that throughout the year. The next three bullets, you see those same descriptions and the same figures as we saw on the revenue side. Our grants are neutral, revenues and expense always equal. So you see a reduction of ESSR 2, reduction of ESSR 3, and then the $28,000 for the other On the right-hand side, we have an increase in our center program tuition of about $350,000. That is the initial estimate that we have provided. The ISD operates center programs on behalf of all the local school districts within our intermediate school districts, so they're projecting a $300,000, $350,000 increase. We have increase in utilities and snowmobile built in. We talked about snowmobile, I think that was a couple meetings ago perhaps, that you approved that renewal of the, provided for that. There's a slight uptick there. We're planning on a slight uptick in our utilities, of course, as we move through the year, we'll amend that if necessary. This next one is probably going to take just a quick minute of explaining, decrease ESSR indirect expense offset. So a lot of times when we get grants, we are allowed to charge what we call an indirect cost. It is to help offset what they view as additional costs that the district is incurring to actually have the grant. When you think about processing payroll or issuing a purchase order, or maybe they're, we're hiring some staff, so there's additional work that's in our human resources office, technology. So those are some examples of the departments that are, they consider indirect costs. So they know that there are costs related to those grants, but it's not that you can say that Julie Davis definitively spends 2% of her time on this grant. So there's a formula that we have to follow. We submit it every year, it's due June 1 of every year, we turn it into the state, and they approve what our indirect rate is. So that really goes to offset because you were already paying me to be here, right? They just know there's some additional costs. So when those grants go away, the indirect with them goes away as well. So it kind of increases our costs is a different way to look at it because our bottom line changes. We're not getting that additional support. Does that kind of make sense? I'm going to pause. And it just looks big this year because ESSR's a large grant, right? And our prior grants that we've had, you know, if there was a little one that went away, it was a grant that was $50,000 and indirect was $200, so it's not as significant as ESSR. The next line, we'll have our new superintendent and with that contract that's authorized on you to record that increase of expense. And then lastly, decrease in just a multitude of items for $23,000. All right. So here's what's not in our budget right now, any increase for employee wages. We are negotiating with all of our employee groups, and so we did not bake in any increase in this. So when we're going to see the figures here in just a minute, know that that's not in there. What's also not in there is any change to non-teaching staffing levels. I just showed you that we are reducing some teachers, but in this budget, we don't have any non-teaching staffing levels reduced, other than if they were in that ESSR grant or make that qualification. So there could be positions that we add and there could be positions that we reduce out of here. There's also no savings from replacing any of the retirees, so we have a large number of retirees this year, as you're well aware. Some of those positions, like I just said a few minutes ago, we aren't replacing, but those that we are, there will be slight savings from that. That is not built into this about. We will capture that in the first budget amendment that we bring to you next year. All right, so let's get into the numbers. And the first column for 2023-2024 budget, that is our current budget that we have that you amended back in March of 2024. And then that middle column is what we're proposing for an amendment to this current year's budget, and then 2024-2025 is what we're proposing for next year's budget. So you can see that if you go across there, our local and our state are changes, not big changes there. You can see in the federal line though, where the ESSR falls off, right? When you look at the middle column of $8.2 million, moving down to just under $2.8 for next year, that's really that ESSR funding. So bottom line, our revenue right now on the books is about $135.7 million. We're recommending to amend that to about $138.7 for this current year, and then our proposed for next year is $131, just under $131.6. All right, moving on to the expenditure side. Same concept, right? The first column is our current year budget, the middle is our recommended amendment to this budget, and then that last one is next year's proposed budget. And you can see all of the change. I'm not going to read through these numbers, but you can see the bottom line is we're about $136.3 right now. We're recommending bumping that up to $137.7, and then pulling that down for next year to $133. Again, a big chunk of that is ESSR, a chunk of it are some position reductions. And we're going to go through those changes for you in just a second here. All right, and then just a summary of our total revenue and total expense. Our projected use or addition to fund balance, so right, our current budget has us using about $600,000 of fund balance. In our amendment, we are proposing that we will actually add just under a million. And again, that's if we spend every dollar, which we know we won't. So, you know, it'll be somewhere above that $1 million of add. And then for next year, we're looking at a use of about $1.5 million of fund balance. So going from a fund balance of $17.9 for this year, ending, amending that to $19.5, and then looking at next year being, pulling that back down to $18. Special revenue fund, which we are also looking at today. I just realized something. I said, oh, but that wasn't, that was already, I already went through our assumptions. Sorry. Special revenue fund. So we're also presenting to you the special revenue fund, and so we also create some budget assumptions for that. We're assuming the Michigan School Meals program is continuing for next year, but we also know we have some slight changes. So on the food service side, you know, our commodities is going down just a tad, that's $75,000. There was a one-time bump up for this current year. And then here too, we're also being conservative and pulling down interest income. On the expense side, for childcare, we have some additional staff this year with some overlay, so that individual actually just retired. So we'll be able to pull down expenditures there, and they had some money in budget and equipment, we've pulled that down. And then in food service, pulled down some equipment. There's that counterpart commodities, it's a revenue expense they tied, so there's that pull down. A slight uptick in food, milk, and non-food items as the cost of everything continues to climb, so we're expecting about $78,000 there. Our June meeting, regular meeting, the board approved the contract for Chartwell, so there's a slight uptick there, $15,000. And then the other program that's in special revenue fund besides childcare and food services are student and school activities. So those are all programs that are supporting all of those things. When you think of National Honor Society as an example of one that's in there, some athletic things are in there as well. That, we're going to pull that down about $60,000. That's really all, as the revenue comes in, they spend it, so we don't overspend that one because we don't let them spend if the revenue's not there supported. And then just some miscellaneous adjustments of about $17,000. All right, so I thought sometimes pie charts are easier to read and understand. There was a bunch of numbers I threw at you. So I thought it would be good to compare our current fiscal year proposed amendment with next year's proposed budget in terms of those different types of expenditures. So when you think of salaries and benefits and then supplies, materials, and purchase services. So just to give you an idea, and I know those numbers are a little bit smaller, I couldn't get them any bigger, so I'm sorry. Or bolder, I tried. So, you know, we are, there's a slight change. It's not significant. Purchase services is staying, you know, pretty close to the same, and same thing for supplies, materials. So, you know, salaries and benefits typically around about 80%. It varies just a little bit. Okay. Special revenue fund, here are all the numbers, and we're looking at ending this year, our proposed amendment is ending at a little under $6.4 million. That's across all three of those programs. And next year, we're proposing to use another $200,000 of that for $6.1 million. All right, and the very last slide is our proposed millage for next year, that's a requirement of this hearing. So our operating millage, that helps our day-to-day operations, right? That's a part of that per pupil foundation allowance, right? We collect some of it through taxes, property taxes, and the rest, the state makes up the difference. Because our community authorized for 2024 and 2025 a .5 mil increase to that, we're able to do a full restoration up to the 18 mils, which is fantastic. That's helping us out a lot. But just in history, you can kind of see, we've had a rollback in 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23. For our current year, this was the year that we didn't have a rollback, but there is another rollback for next year. However, because the community authorized that half a mil, we were still able to levy, we'll still be able to levy the full 18 mils, and then still have a little bit of extra mils in case we have to roll back next year. Gets a little complicated, but know that that half mil of authorization from our community was extremely important for us. We also have a recreation millage, and so that too is subject to rollback if property tax values grow greater, faster than the rate of inflation. So you can see there, the community authorized a 1.0 renewal to that because that one was set to expire. So they authorized that back in 2022 for the 2024, which is where we're at now. But because of the rollback, we can't quite levy the full 1.0 mils rate, only able to levy .9946. And then the last millage to talk about here today is our DOT millage, and we are looking at levying another 6.05 mils. That is levied on all properties, homestead and non-homestead, and that's no change from our current year. That, great, stays the same. All right. Any other questions?
I have just a couple. The, why are the expenses were decreased to student and school activities, like 60K? Is that, is that like, we're just reducing the amount that they're allowed in those categories, or did we get rid of programs?
No, we didn't get rid of any programs. It is really, the rep, that, for that particular program, Holly, that particular fund, is really driven by the programs and their fundraising, and then they spend what they raised the funds for. And some of them have a little bit of a fund balance as well, they maintain a little bit. So, you know, in our crystal ball and trying to figure out what might they be spending next year, we just were conservative and pulled it down. But if they're bringing in money and they're spending it, you know, we will then adjust it accordingly.
That's probably based on what they did this last year, kind of looking at maybe protect it for the future.
Yeah.
And so I was just curious, because I know we had Odyssey the Mine brought to us last year, so I didn't know if that is, that's under this category at all?
There is a little bit of, there is an Odyssey the Mine category in this, but that's, that isn't, the Odyssey the Mine in this is what's used for fundraising to get them to state finals and to Worlds. It's not for the basic, the cost of the coordinators, for example. The cost of the coordinators right now are in our general fund.
And there's one other. We have a miscellaneous account of $23,000 extra decrease or whatever. Like you said, it's like a bunch of miscellaneous categories. And then, and then in this, I'm just asking the proposed amendment to the budget for money that we need to spend, right? That's on one of these, making that work, sorry. I have a question about the extra $23,000 that was brought to us by the contractor. Is that included in here as an increase for us anywhere, or is that a general fund? We got a big check a few months ago, $23,000.
Oh, from the donation from Tower Pinkster?
Yeah.
That is, that is in the current year revenue.
That is.
So it's, yeah, exactly.
All right.
Thank you, sorry.
Because that would be an amendment, right? Because it wasn't in our proposed.
It was, well, you know, we project the amount of revenue that's coming in, so we have a miscellaneous revenue account and that's under the local, if it's miscellaneous local. And so we do estimates, and so if we made any adjustments, it would have been in there. Yeah. Thank you very much. You also have a packet that has much of this information along with some of the historical information, similar to what's in our community budget guide to give everybody a history. But if you've got questions, everything that we walked through here today is also in your packet.
Thank you, Julie. I know this is a huge amount of work for you and your team, and every year, on top of all the other things that you do, so you do an excellent job of getting all of these numbers together and keeping us on track.
Okay, very much appreciated.
I just thought of one question.
Oh, well, I mean, this is not a fair question, and so you can tell me if it's not fair.
Do you have any estimation? I know you don't have baked into this any salary increases for employees. Is that, do you have an estimation of what could that potentially look like? Or is that just really not a great question at this point?
It's an okay question. I just can't.
You'll know.
Right? Because we're negotiating with all the employee groups. You know, we've met several times with our teacher group.
Yeah.
And we've just started to meet with some of the other groups and, you know, we're so early in the process and really don't have sense.
Okay. I just didn't know historically you had like a roundabout, but I get it.
Could I, could I ask a part B to that question just with pure data? Because last year, we proposed the same thing, we were negotiating still, so we didn't, we didn't bake any assumptions into last year's. I am trying to even recall what the whole across the board was in terms of steps and increasing costs.
Yes.
Do you know what that dollar amounted to for the last fiscal year?
Well.
After the, after the thing was negotiated?
Our, I think, I'll figure it ahead. I think cost of step and 1% for all employee groups was around $2 million. So to give you an idea of what that could be.
Okay.
I have another question. This has got to be approved by the 30th of June, right?
Correct.
So as a board, if we ever decided to make changes or ask for something to be trimmed more, right? Which is our prerogative?
Correct.
No, no, I'm not, but on the end of.
No, no, I've never been on the end of that before. So I'm just curious, that we have to do it in between now and the thirtieth, correct?
Yes.
Like if I, if we said, hey, we need the budget trimmed another two million dollars or whatever, then we have to do that. Is that today or do we have to do another special meeting and then come back before the thirtieth before we vote on this?
I would think that you would, in your vote, you would, if you did not approve the resolutions that we're presenting for you to see today, then we would have to go back, make changes, and bring that back to, or call another special meeting and present a revised budget.
Could you, I'm sorry, or you can maybe just tell me. There was a slide that just showed fund balance then proposed for the end of next fiscal year.
One that's on my page?
Yeah, I just, I had.
I don't know how he's got it in order either, so.
So fourteen at the end of this year and then?
Nineteen and a half.
Yep, and then presumably use of some fund balance next year.
Correct.
About still thirteen there.
Yep.
Thank you, Julie. All right, Elizabeth, are there any public comments on the budget? Not, okay, thank you. All right, we will then move on to all of the things that we have to approve. And because we didn't have any prior meetings, we're going to do each of them individually rather than as you consent to agenda. So first, could I please have the motion to approve the minutes from our June tenth regular meeting?
I move, we approve the minutes from the June tenth regular meeting.
And especially, I'm sorry, yes, and especially. Is there any discussion on minutes? Okay, can we, I think we could just do a voice vote on approving minutes.
Oh, I think it's a voice vote.
Yeah, voice vote. So all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right. Are these set now where I'm supposed to touch this to turn that on? I just realized, I thought that they were voice activations. My apologies if my voice has not been picking up. Okay, next, can I please have a motion to amend the General Fund Appropriations Act Amendment Resolution with the available funds one hundred fifty-seven million, two hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars and appropriations of one hundred thirty-seven million, seven hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars. So moved. Okay, any discussion on that?
I guess I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna bring up five, six, seven, and eight. I mean, I would, I would like to propose something different. To ask for a term of the budget in some different categories and then have to come back. I feel like we're walking into some turbulent times coming up. And I feel like we need to see some different changes done.
Would that just be seven and eight then? Would that just be seven and eight then?
This is, this is the number. Just for amending this budget. Reflect actuals.
But we're voting on these separately.
Each of them are separate.
And separate discussions, right?
Perfect. Is there any other discussion on number five? Okay, can you please have a little call vote? Yes, Dr. Mishon?
Yes.
Mr. Bur?
Yes.
Ms. Kova?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes, Mrs. Trining, yes.
Number six, can I have a motion to amend the Special Revenue Fund Appropriations Act Amendment Resolution with the available funds fifteen million, eight hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and appropriations of nine million, four hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars. So moved. One second. Any discussion on this? Okay, can we have a little call vote, please?
Yeah, Dr. Mishon?
Yes.
Mr. Bur?
Um.
Ms. Kova?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes, Mrs. Trining, yes.
Number seven, can I have a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five General Fund Appropriations Act Resolution with the available funds one hundred fifty-one million, eighty-one thousand, ninety-five dollars and appropriations of one hundred thirty-three million, seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. So moved.
Second.
Discussion on that? Okay, then can we have a little call vote?
Sure.
Dr. Mishon?
Yes.
Mr. Bur?
No.
Ms. Kova?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes, Mrs. Trining, yes.
Number seven, can I have a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Special Revenue Fund Appropriations Act Resolution with the available funds fifteen million, four hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars and appropriations of nine million, three hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
I mean, I can discuss it, but I already know where the vote's gonna go, so I mean.
I guess, I'm just curious.
I guess, I think what I'd like to do is I would like to, I mean, I wish the whole team was here, but I would like to talk about just like some other areas and categories. I feel like sometimes when we, when we walk into some of this stuff, you know, and even going forward for the proposed budget, is that we always seem to be trimming from the bottom, you know, on different things and what's happening. And I mean, I'm looking at, and I'm hearing about a lot of stuff that's happening of things that we're getting rid of or things that are not, we're not replacing.
Like what can you give us examples?
Like Dave Howard, are we replacing his job? We're replacing him, and I'm hearing we're not.
He built internally?
Right, but it's not going to be the same thing. So what are we doing to our students? Do you know what I mean? So I, I guess I would love, I mean, I personally would love to have a, a meeting where the seven of us are together and walking through this individually instead of, you know, kind of always just pushing the stuff through. I mean, like, we're getting the information, but I want to talk about it.
What else do you have? I just had a lot.
Well, there's, like, when we ran into the thing last year with Odyssey the Mine, and that came up later. I mean, these are the things that I would like to hear about way ahead of time and walk through. I just, I, for instance, I just went to Caledonia Public School. They asked their team to trim the budget. When have we ever asked the budget to be trimmed? To trim the budget by over two million dollars? And the superintendent walked through and showed all the changes that were to be made for the different categories and stuff. And it was all categories. It wasn't just, you know, you know, what we would say, like, getting rid of, you know, AIDS or, you know, different things like that. So I guess I would, I mean, today's the twentieth, we have to have this done by the thirtieth.
Okay, couple thoughts on that. I mean, from my, my perspective only. I mean, first off, Caledonia is not a peer school, but that's just its own separate thing. But about Dave Howard or other positions that would be, you know, moved from what the courses are that he taught to other teachers within the school. So I was quite upset when I first heard about Dave Howard's position not being filled. But what that is, is it's the specific position that he himself taught and the courses that he taught. Those courses now go to other people. Now, I can understand the frustration because his particular position would be the kind of position that I personally would be teaching. And when it comes to a teacher building a legacy, when we say, how do we replace him? We can't ever replace him. Like, he built that program, what he taught was how he taught it, the way he taught it. Even if we found a person to, sorry. Even if we found a person who would teach those specific courses, it's not like we're replacing Dave Howard. So if those courses move to other teachers, it's maybe not ideal in the hopes that we could, you know, find someone who could truly replace him. But it does make sense when it comes to how courses are moved and assigned. So I know that when I first heard about it, I immediately talked to administration. And I said, I want to know the details on this topic. And had that explained to me in a way that, of course, as someone who's experienced these things over the years, I'm like, oh my gosh, of course, that makes sense. So it's not that we're not replacing him. His courses are just going to other people. He really though, I mean, I just want to say that he is irreplaceable. He's a legendary.
And perhaps one of those other teachers that takes some of the stuff and will grow to become.
Yes, that, that maybe. And then maybe those classes end up moving to that person over time. But, yeah, I think when I first heard about it, I first discussed it with administration and learned more details and was able to understand, okay, these are, this is why the decisions are being made. And I can feel like I am behind those decisions as a result. So when you said, oh, well, I mean, this was brought up and we haven't had a chance to talk about it. I know I took a chance to talk about it back when it was, you know, first raised as an issue. So that's what brought me to come to the conclusion that I feel okay with the decisions being made here. So that's, you know, just using, speaking for myself as an example of why would I feel okay? I mean, I'm not just pushing it through. I did talk about it, I did learn about it, and then decided that I do agree with the way that it's being handled. Or I can, I can agree with the way it's being handled.
Well, I, I'm just trying to follow, I guess, and figure out, because again, you know, we've gone from macro budget to down to one FTE that we're, you know, talking about right now. And Dave Howard, as I'm looking at this, is one out of sixteen FTEs that is being attritioned. And so we have a, again, which is not our job to mingle in each FTE and figure out what needs to be replaced or what needs to not be replaced. And what are we saying about the other fifteen FTEs that are being attritioned when we're highlighting Dave Howard's position as being irreplaceable? All that notwithstanding, what it sounds like you're arguing for is that he should have been replaced, which would mean we'd be spending more money. But your first comment was, what if we need to trim the budget further, which would mean we spend less money? So I'm trying to figure out what, because we can talk about, I mean, what, do you have a particular section of this budget that you think is appropriate?
Right, so I guess what I'm saying too is that Dave, Dave's an example of one, like you said, of sixteen, okay? I think the thing, what I'm looking at is, I'm looking at from a standpoint of, like, what did, like, last year, what Odyssey the Mine did, right? What was it doing for kids if we got rid of the program?
But that was a negotiated term, that was not part of it.
Right, I understand that, but I'm just saying, it's all, it's all budget. And I'm just saying, everything that we do is budget-related, and we do have the power to move stuff.
But that's very vague terminology, you know, and there's details involved in all of this that, the processes that happen differently, right? I mean, the, the lack of funding for the coordinators was something that came after our budget was approved because it was negotiated that way outside of this budget discussion. So we could not have been ahead of that, we could not have changed that, right, in June when we approved our budget.
Right, so what I'm saying is, is that if there's things that we know are, I don't know how to even word this. I feel like what I'm looking at, like with, I'm just gonna say for Dave Howard. Dave Howard is a very valued member of this community and has been for a really long time, okay? And to continue, and it's not just because of the way he was, and, and, I mean, yes, his way he was and his personality and stuff, but it's the program that developed for these students and how it was developed and how it's affecting. I mean, we have, we would have kids, I mean, whenever talking, there's a program, we have kids that come to the mic that let us know what, what's being done and what's not being, you know what I mean? Like, if you get rid of it, this is what it did for me, X, Y, and Z. So I guess what I'm looking at is, I feel like we're always trimming in categories that greatly affect students. And I would like to see some other categories hit, but that, I mean, I, I know I'm just gonna beat my wheels because it's the.
I guess, can you, maybe I don't know something that you do. I'm just curious, you act, are they getting rid of theater at Northern? Is no one else gonna take that on because he's gone?
No, the question is, are, is all, all of his, if all his categories replaced right now? That would be a question. And I'm gonna say they're probably not because we're in negotiations, correct?
Right?
You mean, all, they have all of his classes?
Right, so we're talking about getting rid of classes, right? Every time somebody retires, you have to evaluate if we're gonna keep it or not, correct?
Well, negotiations isn't gonna affect the, the, the students have already tallied for the courses. I mean, they're already planning for the number of people who need to cover what courses. Students have signed up for those already. It's not like those are gonna go poof during negotiations. Like, that's, they already.
They already know what kids want to take what classes. Because they had a sign-up for classes in the spring.
Right, based on who is teaching these classes, correct?
No, no, actually, they'll find the teacher too.
Just based on the class.
And that happens with every social studies teacher who retires and every PE teacher who retires at every level. All of those things are.
Opponent for them.
I mean, that's what attrition is, is being able to find other people to assume that work. Still need, I mean, again, as you said, and again, I still am not really sure why we're meddling in this particular topic. But, I, I mean, it's not a replaceable position.
We're meddling, we're meddling because we have the power to say, trim the budget or, we have the power to do that, correct?
But we have the power, but, but are we supposed to be saying, we want you to hire another drama teacher? Specifically for that.
No, I'm just saying.
Do whatever you want with the other fifteen FTE. I mean, that's just, again, that's, I'm just, you know, ideologically.
Based on something that you'd said before, when you said, it seems that where we make cuts are the things that impact students. And I might make the argument that absolutely every single thing we do impacts students. But what I think you're referring to is specifically directly impacting them as opposed to indirectly. Because I know in the past, you've mentioned before, what's up with the instructional coaches. And that's something that you seem to feel would be something to cut, to trim because that doesn't directly impact the student. Am I in the right field here?
Yeah, I would say absolutely and, and exactly, you know what I mean? So I think, and I think what that does to me is that's something that is, yeah, that would be a category that I would zero in on.
So can I ask what your request would be then to the administration if we could call another special meeting in a week? Which we could, you know, what, what is your ask for them to represent to us? You want to see, you want to see less money spent on the fund balance? You want to see less money spent on people? I mean, what, what would you ask them to do to bring back to us?
Yeah, I think, and I think we're already gonna come on it. We got a new superintendent coming in, what, two weeks? And this is, this is where he's gonna, this is one of the things that's made important to him is, is our finances. So I would like to revisit it. I'd like to sit down as a team and go over and just look at what, what, what makes sense. I mean, a lot of times I think, well, we get handed this and yes, it's my job to look this over and go over things and such. But I also think that there's some categories that, you know, I would like to sit down as a team in front of the public and discuss it openly. You know, but, I, I mean.
I guess, why aren't we doing that now? And if you know what categories you're referring to, what are they?
Well, yeah, that's.
Or are you just telling me that you don't feel like you know enough? You don't know enough specifics?
Well, and I think a lot of the things is too, is that, this is like, for instance, we just got, we're handing, you know, the annual general budget for the, for, 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 you know, for different things, for, you know, the amendments and stuff. And then we're gonna have to propose for the budget for next year's budget and stuff, we just have to listen to. It's a lot of numbers, a lot of crunchy numbers. So I'd like to start this year off, you know, and, and find ways that, I don't know. Just probably spinning my wheels here, so.
Well, we want to make sure that you feel like you understand the budget and where the numbers are and where they go. You know, and maybe there's something that we can do to try to help walk you through maybe some of the more particulars, but not on the day that we actually have to approve the budget when it's, you know, we're right up against the deadline. Maybe something that we can try to incorporate some learning with you along with the new superintendent as, throughout the year, so you can see, get a little bit of a deeper dive into some of these numbers.
So maybe what I'm looking at is maybe to propose, like, we just had a meeting on the tenth, right? And we had a finance meeting on the week before. So changing dates maybe would help to have, you know, for the future going forward, just have something else that's like this earlier than the twentieth, and then the twentieth coming back to us again, if that makes sense.
So like one more.
I mean, this, I mean, you take a look at what we've been through the last, you know, two times. This is, this is a lot. This is a lot for us, and it's a lot of money blowing out. We're spending the taxpayers' dollars on stuff. You know, and I, you know, you kind of wonder, is, is it all necessary? Or is it just, you know, we're just spending money because we have extra money to spend? I don't know, but I'm looking at it as that, when I first looked at the budget, when I first came on and I looked at things and stuff and where we were at and seeing where we're at now. And I know, and even just minusing off the asset funds, we're, it's a lot of millions of dollars. And we, we just lost, I mean, we're losing people. We're having a struggle having students come to our school right now. And I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it's not, it's not just the birthright, it's other things. Because I, I call the charter schools, I call the Christian schools, I call the homeschool building, it's everywhere. So where, what are we missing here? And the budget is really driven by what we do, by what's happening and what the future's looking like. If we're gonna be lacking students and stuff. And so I guess I'm looking at.
So do you think in an era where everything costs more year for year, that we should be spending less to improve ourselves, to attract more students? I don't see how that lines up.
Well, in order to attract students, I, if, if we're not fiscally responsible, at some point, the ship's gonna go down, right? I mean, at some point, we're.
I'd be hard-pressed to find a year in our budgets where we've been fiscally irresponsible. I think the, the, the finance office has done an amazing job year after year of.
I agree, but we're coming into some turbulent waters, okay? And I think the thing that is, is not to increase, it's to decrease. You're gonna say, it's a company, we own, we, we're running a company right now. And we're in the company of educating students. So in order to save us for the future, I think you, yeah, I'd like to see it trimmed a little bit more. I'd like to come under, we're, we're way under. We're, we're under, so we're in a safe zone, guys. And personally, that is personally just me, so.
I just, I wonder, because you said you looked over the budget, there was a lot going on. Did you then go to finance and, and have a meeting? Did you then go to finance and, and have a meeting with, with Julie or anyone in the finance department to answer some of those questions?
No, I didn't. What I did is I compared numbers to what we were spending in the back. I went back and I looked at track records, I looked at the data, and I looked at where we were going. And it seems like the spending is going this way, while the student thing is going this way.
So do you know why?
That makes no sense. Do I know why we have, I...
From looking at that?
I know the question I've asked before for finance, why, why the tick of the increase is Esser. Okay, so let's just take Esser off the table. We didn't have Esser back, you know, four years ago. Let's just take it off the table. What was the budget back then? You know, and I don't understand the increase, and it's a lot. It's not like $750,000 or a million dollars, it's millions of dollars. So as we keep spending money, you know what I mean? Our, our enrollment is going down, and it's, and it sounds like it's gonna continue to go down from, from what we're projecting and such, for, for what we have for people signing up for classes, or what we have for kindergarten roundup or whatever. So I guess what I'm looking at is, at some point, at some point, are we gonna get to a point where we're, we're gonna have to omit buildings or omit, you know what I mean? Like, what, what does that look like? Do we wanna really do that in Forest Hills?
But how, do you have an objective concern that that's where we're headed? That's why, that was the last question I just asked. We've added to the fund balance this year, right? So we have taken in more than we spent this year, we have increased our savings. Next year, with this proposal, even with a $2 million, you know, deficit essentially on paper, without even waiting to negotiate it built in, we're still projected that 13.5% of fund balance at the end of next year. Those are safe numbers, that's where we're hoping to be, that's all part of this smoothing out in these times where everything is costing more.
And that's with the typical of, okay, we're gonna be spending this much of our fund balance, and it usually ends up, we don't spend that much of the fund balance.
When you see our proposed fund balance from this time last year, our fund balance is higher now than we proposed last year.
Right, so...
So I just don't understand where, why you think we're like a sinking ship, or that we're, you know, it's not like we're still only taking in 100 million and we're spending 150, right? Our, our revenues have increased as well, so we have more money to be able to spend.
With the fund balance, it's not, it's the taxpayers' money that we're holding on to, correct?
I don't even know what that means, really, I don't know what you're saying.
The fund, the fund balance, the 19 million or whatever that's projected to be in there, who's, who's, where did the money come from?
Yes, I, I, yes, that's my, every taxpayer's paid in, and we have received from all sorts of sources in Georgia, a fund largely from the state of Michigan, it's that fund, right? What would you thought, we should not have a fund balance?
I'm not saying we're not should have a fund balance, but I'm seeing is that if we're gonna do it, that, I mean, is the whole goal to put back into the fund balance, or is the whole goal to actually balance, or to, to, to come down on the budget? I'm, I'm looking at from...
Coming down on the budget would add to the fund balance.
Right.
Right?
If you're projecting, we're projecting we're gonna spend, what, 130, almost 138 million?
133 for next year, which is five million less than we spent this year.
Right, right, five million less because of, you gotta take the Esser funds out of that, though.
No, Esser funds came off of both sides.
Yeah, they came off of the...
So what if we started off with our budget in 2019 and 2020?
Okay.
About 113.
But what, but what was our income in 2019? That, that, that's the, that's the thing, right? If a company brings in more money, they have more money to spend. We have more money to spend on our people and...
I probably not spending, so...
Okay, okay.
And I mean, and I...
That's why you have the information, you have the information.
I have the information, I'm looking at the data, and I'm watching the trend, and I'm, and I'm paying attention to, to the other stuff that's out there, and I feel like we're, there's some areas that we definitely could...
A couple of things I just wanna know, I just played in my calculator here. You know, compared to four years ago, you said, you know, you keep spending more and more and more. Well, 115 years ago, or, 115 years ago, 115 years ago, we probably didn't spend a whole heck of a lot. Uh, in 2020, four years ago, our expenditures were 115 million. 115 million in 2024 is the same as 137 million today.
And why is that?
Inflation.
It's 2%.
It's inflation, you put it in, and inflation varies, so, you know, more in some years, less in others, but, so if you had $115 million in 2020, that's the same as 137 million today, and we're actually proposing 133 million for next year. So that would be a savings when you're comparing $20,000 to $20,000. But I think what, the, the bigger point here, I think, is, we, we do wanna be fiscally responsible. We wanna make sure we're offering the programs that kids want, that everybody needs, that we provide an excellent education. And I think the, but coming in and looking at it going, I think we should cut instructional coaches, and we should cut this little thing here and there, that's, that's just taking a whack at something without having the full picture. I think putting together, when our new superintendent comes in, one of the things that we want to do is do a strategic plan, where we look at all of the programs, at everything that we're doing, seeing what aligns with what we wanna do, and what aligns with where we want to go. Do we need to change things? Do we need to take some things out? Do we need to add other things? And putting together a whole big budget picture from back. And I think that makes more sense as looking forward, rather than looking at it going, alright, in the next 10 days, I wanna take $2 million off of something just because I wanna take $2 million off.
I'm just asking for the conversation with it, which we don't do. We glean the information, and then we vote. And yes, we do ask questions on the side, correct? But I, right, I thought you go on that, but what I'm saying is that, your information that you received, does the public know about it? Have you, have you let the public know about the information that you've received in asking the question?
So I can see why you're saying that, because you think that the public needs to know absolutely every single thing, and, and it would be nice if all of that was transparent, as I'm saying. That's not my job to make that transparent, that's the district's job. But it's my job to fully understand what is going on with the various things that are being spent, and to hear what the, the people in public, they care about what they want, and to say, you know what? I have been elected to this position because people know that I am asking questions of the people within the district. I'm, I'm learning from the community, and when I weigh those things, I say, okay, this seems to be, this is being done well. And so then that is my vote. I don't feel like I need to explain every single thing that I do, right? It's not even possible. The time spent listening to people can't be spent also, like, I don't know what, what, what I need to put out there. That's the district's job. So I do feel like I don't need to explain every single thing. Uh, I hope that people trust that I am listening and learning, and that I come prepared, and that my vote is for a reason. So that's how I view it, I don't need to, I mean, if somebody wants to talk to me and say, why did you do that? I could explain why, but nobody's asking that question, it would be asked the questions. I don't know, I just, I feel like, these are questions that should have maybe been explored prior to the meeting. And that's, you know, that's my feelings on that one. And I don't feel like it needs to be explored during the meeting. Uh, people can ask me afterwards.
This is where, this is where, when we're having our meetings, when the questions are being asked, the answers are being made in a public format, instead of being picked up on the phone and being asked, and then you just have yourself, it's not your job to put it back out there. And I, 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 I'm completely the opposite. I feel like it is our job to share the information, additional information that's out there if somebody hasn't asked for it, because it actually gives the voters an opportunity to see the full picture. And they elected us to be the representatives. So for us to be transparent back with them, I, in my opinion, I, I do, that's very, I view that very highly, that, that's what our job is. So some of the questions I'm asking, I, I would rather have the conversation here than a phone call here, and here, and here, and here, and here for stuff, if I don't, you know what I mean, if I haven't gotten the answers, sometimes somebody else has, and I can draw it out, but I can only do it this in the meeting when the suddenness are present, right?
But what you really should be doing is giving answers to your questions ahead of time, because...
Not from us, but from the district.
Because we're not the ones that have all of the answers, it would be Julie or Christine who's got it.
And I am getting the answers, I'm reviewing the data, I'm looking at a trend. I'm looking at a trend, and I'm looking at it from a different lens. I'm looking at it from a business lens right now.
Again, but bringing it up here where we don't have your data, or we don't know what you've been looking at, we're not in a position to answer some of the types of questions you're asking. The experts, the grownups are...
I'm not saying I have you guys answer the questions, I wanna have the discussion, because it's...
What discussion can you have if nobody has the same information that you have?
It's an interpretation of the information that you're looking at.
We can't have an intelligent discussion if you have data that none of us have.
I'm, we can, we can...
Okay. Alright, I think we have exhausted discussion on this particular one, um, so can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Dr. Mishad?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
No.
Ms. Koval?
Yes.
Dr. Fawcett?
Yes, Mrs. Tryang, yes.
Alright, can I please have a motion to approve the cost of additional asbestos abatement at Ada East Elementary School by TES Environmental for a cost of $118,600?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? We have a roll call vote, please. Dr. Mishad?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
Yes.
Ms. Koval?
Yes.
Dr. Fawcett?
Yes, Mrs. Tryang, yes.
Uh, can I have a motion to approve the purchase of a replacement digital sign by Daktronics for an amount not to exceed $48,000?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Dr. Mishad?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
Yes.
Ms. Koval?
Yes.
Dr. Fawcett?
Yes, Mrs. Tryang, yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the purchase of new playground equipment for Map Forest Elementary by Game Time Sinclair Recreation for a mountain map to exceed $100,000?
So moved.
I'll second that too. Any discussion? Alright, roll call vote, please. Dr. Mishad?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
Yes.
Ms. Koval?
Yes.
Dr. Fawcett?
Yes, Mrs. Tryang, yes.
Alright, can I have a motion to approve the hire and issue an administrative contract to Heather McKenny Riewel, I don't remember, Riewel, uh, for the 2024-2025 school year?
Oh, I'm sorry, so moved.
I'll second that too. Any discussion?
Yes, you see me.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Uh, Dr. Mishad?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
Yes.
Ms. Koval?
Yes.
Dr. Fawcett?
Yes, Mrs. Tryang, yes.
Alright, and I'd add one thing.
I know we've had some discussion, but I just wanted to let the board know that the new superintendent, Ben Kirgry, was part of these interviews, so he was actually able to be part of the final interviews for the Northern High School principal, and also for the Central Middle School principal, which is, didn't need to come to the board because it's an internal employee, and, um, so it's Jeff Simon's, not Jeff Simon, who is being offered the Central Middle School principal. But I was really pleased that Ben was able to be there.
Thanks for your input.
Thank you, appreciate you doing it. Uh, alright, when we're here, can I have a motion to approve the hire and issue contracts to Sophie Brown, Laura Engelberg, Jordan George, Melissa McNeil, Lauren Trotter, Ross Veldhier, Alexander Webster, and Andrea Yang for the 2024-2025 school year?
Welcome to the district, everybody, so moved.
I'll second, any discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call vote? Dr. Mishad?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
Yes.
Ms. Koval?
Yes.
Dr. Fawcett?
Yes, Mrs. Tryang, yes.
Alright, thank you very much, everybody, we will now move on to informational items.
We have some resignations, um, that occur again, several teachers, three teachers that we have, one from Central High, one from Eastern High, and one from Meadowbrook. And resignations for various reasons, whether they're moving out of state, or they're moving across state. So we've had quite a few teachers that are moving to the east side of the state, so...
Thank you. Uh, and we are now moving on to the superintendent's report. Right before you do, I will make one more call out, if you wanted to speak at public comment. Uh, Mrs. Brink is picking up the cards right now, so please get that turned into her ASAP, if there's something you'd like to say in public comment. Great.
Um, hiring is just very intensive for the past couple of weeks. As you know, we've had seven administrative hires, uh, which is a lot, and is very time consuming. I want to thank the board members who were able to participate in some of those interview process. Uh, it's really important that we have all of our stakeholder voices in here, so we represent, we have parents at the high school level, and, um, we also have students involved, staff involved, so I'm really pleased with the process that went through. And we're excited to have Heather join us, um, coming from outside of the district, and I'm really excited to see how Jeff does in his new role in next year, and, um, pleased that we were able to find an internal candidate to move forward. And we will have our communications ready to go to the staff and the parents today. I was waiting for board approval on Heather, and, um, of course, you know, it doesn't take long for the rumor mill to start, and, and I just kept saying, we gotta wait until we have board approval, and I'm ready to send the communication today. And we're excited to welcome, uh, Heather, and also to have Jeff take on a new leadership.
Thank you very much.
And I wanna thank the board again, you know, I know I thanked you in June, Jeff, but I wanna thank you for this opportunity. It's been amazing, as I said, both professionally rewarding and personally rewarding. And, um, I have a strong affinity to Forest Hills Public School now, so I'll be watching from afar. I've had an opportunity to engage with Ben, and I was really pleased that he was able to be part of the interview process, because it's his administrative team that he's gonna be taking forward. So for him to be able to make the final decision, not only for Central High School, but for Northern High School and for Central Middle School, would be really important to him. He's made the time to be able to be part of that, so it's all good. And thank you.
Thank you. So that leads us into board communication, and the thing I wanted to say was, thank you. This has been an amazing year, um, I'm really glad that you stepped forward and were able to take on this position for us this year. I know there was talk of just having, oh, just somebody that comes and keeps things running, keeps the, keeps the seat warm, make sure we don't, you know, stumble and fall on our face, and during the course of the year, while we look for the new superintendent, but you went above and beyond that, you, you know, charted some missions, took a look into some things that really needed to be looked into, you handled crises, you handled joys, you handled everything in between, um, and I just personally could not have been more pleased, and was so thrilled to work with you this year, and you will be very missed.
Thank you.
I also think you redeemed yourself, the students were really worried about your ability to call a snow day.
I know, I know, that was a big deal.
But per their social media accounts, I think you were okay.
Yeah. They found my emails.
Are there any other board communications?
Well, I just wanted to share that I was at Forest Hills Foundation yesterday for the golf outing, and 90 degrees plus minus.
Oh, gosh.
And, um, but it was so much fun, and really, I'm not, it's incredible, well, every event had been very well executed. And, um, of course, Corey Anderson's team won, so I asked to make a change that no athletic directors are allowed to play next year. I said, we'll have a special meeting for him, so he can't show up, no, I'm kidding. But it was really fun, and as hot as it was, they had, you know, Noco's provision was out, you, you had a crossroad you needed to eat, they had the Water Girls, you know, Amy Major was out there, some of the other team members were, you know, helping out along, but very well run, and was, I don't even know what place we came in, but we did have some burgers, so I guess I was pretty happy we didn't just end up at Pardon all the time. But it was fun, and it was a really good time, and, um, gotta hang out with some of the staff, you know, the team members and stuff, so see them on a different, completely different level, so it was very enjoyable.
I got booted out of my volunteer world, I was supposed to be one of the Water Girls. And I was, and I was all set to, especially to drive the golf cart and stuff, but they had so many staff volunteers that they were, they gave me a pass, and since we've been dealing with some staffing issues and stuff, it was easier to stay here in district office.
With air conditioning.
Plus, with air conditioning.
Yeah, there you go, you know, next year, there's like, somebody had fans on their cart, you know, and then the water spritzers or whatever. Next year will be, will be, our carts will be, you know...
Decked out.
Decked out, yes, exactly.
Next year will probably be 62 and raining.
They said the last year, yours has been really warm, you know, for this and stuff, but I was like, I was thinking we're just golfing nine holes. I'm like, nine, right? And I was like, 18, and I go, oh my gosh. I don't know, I've never golfed 18 in my life, so I'm like, okay. But no, very, very well put together, very well timed, and we had 116 golfers, which is very good foundation, yeah. So it was pretty cool.
And I know Ben Kirby had been interested and wanted to go, but yesterday was his moving day. So he was moving from the east side to his new home over here yesterday, so, uh, maybe next year he'll be able to go out, but I hope his, I hope his move went smoothly.
Yeah, because usually they have somebody do the putt or something, you know, for it.
And they told me they weren't going to this year, so I said, okay, good, I'm good, I'm in the air, I'm good. Yeah.
Alright, any other communications? Okay, then, we'll move on to public comments. At this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. For established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates that they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. Oh, we have no public comments today, alright, all the public comments are closed.
Um, is there any other business before the board? All right, hearing that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Good grief, something good.
Same goes to Sarah.